Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm gonna do is open up for public forum. If there's anybody here wishing to address the council. Looking around the room and seeing no response, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public forum and ask for agenda changes.
Staff have no changes to present this evening, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, that being said, I would ask for the consent agenda approval.
Mr. Mayor, after reviewing the consent agenda, I would make a motion to approve it.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 That carries. We'll move on to unfinished business and the first item is a distressed property at 308 Chestnut. Where are we at on that?
Uh, I don't know if Brad has had any further communication
Nope.
from Mr. Reckus or his attorney. Um, we do have uh, bids on asbestos inspection for the property. To proceed with that, so I guess it's whether the council still wants us to use the administrative warrant function to get in there for the asbestos inspection for potential demolition.
And we are referring to?
Hospital Inn, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to continue in that direction.
I agree.
Is that all you need is a consensus? Sound good to you, Charlie?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, we done with 308 Chestnut?
No.
Okay, let's move on to distressed property at 603 Spruce. Where are we at on that one?
Uh, that we, you have as a handout. Communication that was sent to our attorney from the property owner's attorney detailing the work they've done thus far and that their full restoration is expected within six months. Because they have been making positive forward progress on the property, we're recommending the council take 603 Spruce out of the distressed property hearing status and we'll just continue to watch the property. We can always put it back in if for some reason they wouldn't adhere to this timeline, but it's, most of the issues they've already taken care of addressed the major concerns that were in that inspection report regarding vegetation and the condition of the roof. So.
In six months, if they're after, as they say they are, six months would be, I would say efficient, uh, is sufficient to give them time to complete that. If they need more, I mean, if they're making progress and we can see they're clearly making progress, we can extend it, but
Yeah.
I think that six months is reasonable. So you need a motion to remove it from, uh?
Yeah, to just close it out.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to close out the distressed property hearings at 603 Spruce.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to remove the distressed property hearing from 603 Spruce. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That carries and will be removed. It's nice to get one of them knocked off of our
Mm-hmm.
list. Next up, we have new business. The first item is Oswald Lehman Park and Scout Park Master Plan Proposals. Ethan can preface us there, but I believe we have Brent Chestnut here to address this as well.
Um, so as you all know, part of the land agreement we had for the property to extend Main Street involved the creation of Oswald Lehman Park over by the slough, so we need to get started on that now that construction of Main Street's done and we kinda know all of our land use. And while we were meeting with Baughman, who we met through conversations actually, that we're having in light of some work the community foundation is looking at with downtown beautification, et cetera, met with Brent Chestnut and the team from Baughman and asked them to also look at Scout Park and particularly an evaluation of Scout Cabin and what options might be available there. As has been discussed in some work sessions, that building needs some attention and maybe needs a plan for how to best utilize it. So, I'll let Brent talk more about what they're proposing.
Uh, so we're proposing to get some aerial images of the two parks, so that way we can create some concepts. Bring it back to Ethan and the Parks Board and you all to give us feedback on which direction you wanna go. Also, at the same time, we would develop cost estimates for construction and all of those things. Not in the proposal is after that, then we would help you try to find some funding mechanisms for any improvements. Doesn't include design, doesn't include actually building plans or doing anything. It's just a concept phase to get consensus and everybody on the same page and to figure out a kind of a budget for the projects. So. Yes, with that, I have answered questions.
So your efforts will be in coming up with a concept and these numbers on the, for your services are indicated here, but once we say, okay, that's great. We still need to retain an architectural firm to proceed with the actual drawings on each of these projects?
Correct. At that point, there's any number of directions you can go, one of them being retaining someone like us, once again, to help create construction plans, to be able to get bids out and get something built. Sidewalks, restoring some buildings, park things.
And you had mentioned helping us find some potential financing for these, so I assume you guys are pretty knowledgeable of available grant programs and things like that that are out there for this kind of a project?
Uh, at risk of sounding ignorant, there is so much out there that nobody is an expert. So.
I bet you're closer than we are.
That may be fair, but yes, there are some mechanisms and people that we can ask to kinda, once we have a concept and a number, then the agencies that have money and grants look at those things and compare them. And that first step is to have something to show them, a idea, thought, picture, and then what scale we're talking about. So, yeah.
So you're not coming up with a plan yet? Or how does this work?
So, so it's a concept. So we come back with, it would be a plan. It'd be a one-page plan sheet that shows where sidewalks would go, where you wanna plant trees, where you wanna remove trees, park areas, any number of things in these concepts. And then it's a picture that we all look at from an aerial down onto it to help figure out how we access the park. Where are we gonna park cars? How are we gonna get trash services to the scout?
So have you talked about any initial plans? Like, for example, is there just gonna be like a boring square sidewalk around Scout Park? Or are we gonna make it interesting?
So, we've had some preliminary talks. We have some ideas. So we wanna take those ideas, put it into a concept and bring it back to the Parks Board and get the feedback. So, yes and, yes and no. If that is a thing that makes sense, then yeah, but no, there's opportunities to do other things.
Okay. Regarding the cabin itself, will you come up with a proposed floor plan for conditions of use for the various spaces within that cabin?
Yeah, so we've retained a sub to come help evaluate the structural condition of the building to see
Who's that?
what we could use and what we can't.
Who's the sub?
A private guy in Wichita that we work with
Okay.
often.
Grant, did you have anything you wanna weigh in on tonight?
No, I, they explained pretty well what this is. It's kinda exciting for us to be able to design a new park, because we haven't ever gone to this stage in putting one in and with the obligation of the city to do the one Oswald Lehman Park down there. It gives us a chance to step back and look at our existing parks and get an actual plan in place. For those in, you know, in my mind, we knock these parks out, then probably need to go through this same process with, you know, Williams Park that's been undeveloped and the entirety of Riverside Park, depending on the bond issue, success or not, and see what we need down there. So I think this is a very, very good first step in learning the process of it, going through this process on a brand-new park and an existing park to get us kind of solidified for a long-term plan, because we've been reactionary in the past. So I think this gets us a little more proactive in where we're going.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of excited to see these concepts.
Yeah, me too.
So, that's.
Thanks, Grant.
We did specifically ask for there to be a public input section into the plans, so that they're not just presented and saying like, hey, this was, you know, staff and that. So, there'll be at least one on both of those plans and.
So we'll have a concept plan and then probably have a public forum here?
Um, once we get that initial, we'll work and like push it out via like the marquee and stuff, kinda like we did the battery, energy, storage conversation. And the other big part that's helpful for us just for future planning, as you all know, is getting that preliminary budget of saying like, hey, the community asked this for Oswald Lehman Park, but you know, that's a $1 million park project, not a
Right.
$200,000. So, the cost estimate is also very helpful for us to just know what's actually feasible for us to do.
Yeah, I think it's a good deal. If you bring the first concept to the group and they go through and say, we've got, we've got several changes, do you revisions? Does your quote include a limited number of revisions?
Yes, it does.
Mm-hmm. And what would that number be? Two, three, four?
So we're hoping to be able to do the scout in just one round. So we come to the, to the Parks Board, get comments back from there, then come to the public as a whole and get comments. So I guess that's two. And then I believe on Lehman, we talked about doing two concepts initially to have kind of, be able to have a discussion about it. And then come back to you guys or a more open public forum and present that.
Sounds good. Any other questions, council? Oh, wait, on the Parks Board? Yeah. Thanks for coming in, Brent. We're looking forward to it.
Do you need approval?
Yeah, if you wanna make.
So with that, there are no more questions or discussion. Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the proposal from Baughman for the Oswald Lehman Park Master Plan for an amount not to exceed $8,500 and authorization for staff to sign any related documents.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve this work for Oswald Lehman Park and Scout Park. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That carries.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd also make a motion to approve the proposal from Baughman for the Scout Park Master Plan for the amount not to exceed 13.5 and authorization for staff to sign any related documents.
Second.
Okay, my mistake. We have a separate motion for Scout Park for the same thing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That one carries. Again, thanks for coming in tonight, Brent. Next item on the agenda is North Street Improvement Project Consultant Agreement. More exciting stuff.
It is if you live on North Street.
This is for the project we received, the KDOT Cost Share Grant. It's for Lochner to serve as the project consultant for it. Basically includes their services. For design, advertising and bidding, and then construction administration. They did not put a component in there for actual construction inspection, but said we can negotiate that as the project actually gets closer, have a little bit more ideal. Lets them also know, you know, kinda what the city's expectation are, you know, if you want an inspector out there on site 24/7 during the project, that's gonna have certain cost. But again, I know the $260,000 seems a lot for an engineering project, but remember, this is around a $3 million project. Estimated in total, and it includes sidewalks, streets, water line removal, the stormwater updates that need to be made. So, it's a fairly large and encompassed project. We are recommending going with Lochner. They basically helped us during the grant application phase, so they're pretty familiar with what the city was hoping to accomplish with that project. They did all of that at no cost to the city, as far as getting those preliminary budget numbers and kind of the plans that we submitted on a tentative basis. And the real reason why we're needing to move forward with this now is a lot of things like surveying and all that. If we wanna hopefully meet the goal of being able to have that project begin in early 2025, it's gonna probably take multiple months to not only get the surveying done and completed, but to also make contact with entities like the railroad, the Army Corps of Engineers. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts with this project because of how big it is too. So.
Anybody have any questions or discussion? That, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the cons, uh, consultant agreement with Lochner for the North Street Improvement Project for an amount not to exceed $260,000 and authorization for city manager to sign.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the consulting agreement with Lochner for the North Street Project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Next up, speaking of Lochner, Safe Routes to School Improvement Project Discussion. They've helped us a lot with this project as well. Where are we at with that one now?
Um, so we found out as KDOT was doing their final plan reviews for this project, the original project proposed that there would be rapid flashing beacons installed at the crosswalks. In addition to the school zone flashing signage that already exists on Sixth Street, KDOT has indicated that they are not going to allow both rapid flashing beacons and a flashing school zone sign. So, we have to basically make the determination whether, and there were some examples in the packets, of converting the school zone signs from their current, you know, flashing the light above and below the actual sign to, it's a speed limit sign, says school, has times spelled out, probably a very similar example. Most people have seen is like on 12th Street by Newton High School. They don't have flashing signs. They have a text-based sign for a school zone. I let Brad or Chief tell you, I mean, they're both legally allowable under, under traffic can be enforced the same way. Anyway, we would have to convert those signs away from flashing and then we could put the rapid flashing beacons up at the crosswalks. And if not, we would just have standard crosswalk signage and the flashing beacons would stay for the school zone sign itself. And then, we would just recommend, I guess from staff, whatever direction you all are feeling, that whatever approach we take for Sixth Street, probably should take a similar approach for Seventh Street, although you could probably make the argument that, you know, Seventh Street was also supposed to have a rapid flashing beacon for pedestrian crossing, but if we put the school zone there, they're not going to allow us to do both either, or at least and utilize KDOT funding for it. So.
I'll ask Charlie about this. Charlie, do you have an opinion on any of this?
I prefer the rapid flashing.
The crosswalk beacons?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's more effective. I was Wichita today and saw both operating and one catches your attention a lot more than the other.
So would we have multiple, like one down by the high school as well?
Um, yeah, so right now, the, the new crosswalks or the, the crosswalk that's by the Chestnut Apartments is gonna be straightened out a little bit, so it's not running, you know, across. It would have an RFB installed as well. And then Santa Fe, Sixth and Santa Fe becomes a new dedicated crosswalk, because when they did their pedestrian head count during the development of the plan, that's where they saw the most students. There still will be the one crosswalk a little bit further down that's
That Harvey, yeah.
Yeah, just there, but we didn't, because that's mid-block crossing, et cetera, they said that could still be utilized, but it's not attention and efforts would be made to try and get students to cross either closer to Chestnut or at Santa Fe. And those would be the only marked ones.
What do you think, Josh?
I might have missed it. There's also gonna be one at Seventh and Chestnut.
And yeah, yeah, Seventh and Chestnut would get.
What do you think about the ones that aren't, like it just be a, on either end, it'd just be a sign?
You know, I think you can argue each way, which is the tricky part, because the rapid flashing beacons can be used 24/7. I mean, even if it's not a school day, it's Saturday afternoon, people can hit them, they can use them. However, the other side of the argument is if your goal is to slow people down in a school zone, the flashing lights, both ends of it are gonna do that. It's gonna show that, hey, here it is, seven to eight and three to four, Monday through Friday. Honestly, whichever way is decided, some people are gonna be unhappy. There's, like I said, benefits to both. I mean, I am not set either way. I can see positives going either direction, but there's negatives going both directions.
Those who turn from somewhere in the middle and you don't see a light on the back of that, how do you know what speed to go?
Which, and that's something discussed on Chestnuts, it's easy. We can put a sign right there coming off of Seventh Street. Coming down Sixth Street, we don't have anything. We currently don't. That's something that, you know, people have talked about in the past. I don't know, I've been here over 10 years and we've never had signs coming in. And I'm not sure that people can see those lights on the back of the flashing school zone signs as they are now.
I mean, I, I look at them.
Some people do. I mean, if you're local around here, yes. If you're not, you're probably not gonna look at the back of those signs.
They used to flash and they were more visible.
Right.
Probably.
Now it's just a solid.
Solid. Out-of-towners aren't sure what it is.
Right. Legally, Brad, is there anything's, I didn't think so, but.
So the, the rapid flashing are gonna be like right on the crosswalk?
Mm-hmm. And they're only gonna be, they'll have a push button. They'll be activated when somebody comes to it. Other than that, they won't be flashing. So that's the only time you're gonna have them going is if someone's at the crosswalk hitting the button.
Can, does it have to be all or nothing?
Me, one or the other.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, because like, obviously, we have a cross guard, you know, at Chestnut. We don't have that person on Seventh Street. So that, I guess, would be, I mean, because let's not act like we live in New York City where, you know, this is a really heavily, I mean, the busy times of the day are 7:15 in the morning till whatever, and then after school. But other than that, I mean, y-you could count, I don't know, how many cars go by there. I'm not trying to be, but like, I guess that's what I, I mean, if it's about people crossing safely, and it has to be all or nothing, I mean.
One other thing to think about too is the restriping. The restriping on Sixth Street is gonna take away the four lanes. You're gonna have a bike lane, an east and west lane, and then a turn lane in the middle. That potential, has the potential during those school zone times to, reference I use is kinda like, you're gonna have a bunch of cars coming out of the pits at NASCAR. If that first car's speeding, probably everyone's gonna be speeding, but that first car's going 15 to 20, they're gonna hold everybody up. So, it, potentially, I think when people get used to that, you'll actually see that slow traffic down on Sixth Street just naturally, because you're only gonna have that one lane in both directions.
Shauna, are you saying that you would rather see some flashing lights in one location and signage at another location?
Right, yeah. Well, like, I just think the, the flashing lights as you're coming towards the schools tell you ahead, I mean, which it doesn't, like you said, if you turn onto the street, well, you're in front of a school and it's 7:15 in the morning. If you don't have common sense, I guess, then. I, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, like, but, and, and there's plenty of traffic there to show you that, oh, there must be something going on, because it's not typical of our, of our town. So.
How many?
I think the flashing lights as you're on Chestnut are sufficient, you know, in my mind. But Seventh Street for sure, there's not somebody there monitoring the cross, the kids crossing and the people going by. And so, if that, if that makes it more safe, then.
I do like that you could push a button during off hours.
Same. I mean, how many, as part of that plan, how many actual crosswalks are we going to have?
Three.
Three.
Yep.
In which we only have one crossing guard. So, those other two will be unattended and having the ability to push that button and flash those lights, to me, is probably better than just two lights on each end of Sixth.
Well, how many pedestrians have been hit by a car?
In 10 years, we haven't had any in that area that we're discussing now.
So I, I mean, I don't know. I, I guess I didn't realize that was a problem, other than.
What's the reason for not being able to do both?
Too much, just like, basically what the, the RFBs, you know, if you already see a flashing light, then you're not responding to, I mean, they just consider it best practice was the best answer we got when we said, there's, nothing we found like in the manual for uniform devices that strictly
Continually in a system.
prohibits it. It's just because it's KDOT grant funding, we have to abide by.
Are these, I mean, so the, it's being funded from KDOT and so, you mean, like, expenditure-wise, I mean, it's not coming out of our funds then?
Uh, the grant overalls an 80/20 match, so depending, I mean, if you, you know, like, if the consensus is to leave Sixth Street as is and just, we would just upgrade the, upgrade the two school zone flashing lights, you know, on each end of Sixth Street, and the two RFBs would be removed from the plan, which in theory frees up that cost. And I wanna say those are anywhere from probably $10,000 to $14,000. And potentially, I mean, we can look at, you know, that just goes to other portions of the plan or, you know, construction, because the project estimates were, you know, developed a year and a half ago. So, that's why it was kinda hard to give the fiscal impact, because either way, and as far as all or none, Sixth Street has to be all or none of you either gonna have flashing lights or the two crosswalk beacons. I think on Seventh Street, you could say we still want a rapid flashing beacon on Seventh, and just know that any school zone signage we put up is going to have to be just the basic school zone with times, that, and not a flashing light.
Well, that's my, that, I'm for that. But, that's just me. Because I don't see a system that's necessarily broken. If we haven't had a high, in like, incidence of pedestrians getting, then doesn't seem like we need to go to all of that effort in my mind, but, that's just me.
I, I'd agree with, with that in the sense of, if you're gonna put a rapid flashing beacon up, Chestnut's the place to do it versus Sixth Street. Just my personal opinion is.
There's a lot more visibility, Sixth Street.
Yeah. And going down to the two lanes with your turn and your, your bike lanes, I think even gives it more visibility. And then the one lanes, you're trying to navigate two now instead of four. So.
I can see it both ways, but I, I think I would lean, that lean towards what Shauna said too.
Well, did you get your answer?
Not exactly.
Well, for my part, I would, you know, Charlie's out there. He sees how people respond to the stimuli, whether it be a sign or flashing lights. So he's out there all the time. So, you know, if he thinks, I'm gonna basically defer to him on, on my opinion here. If he thinks that that is the most effective way. You know? The flashing lights and such.
I think the flashing lights on, at Seventh and Chestnut for that crosswalk with the push button would be superior than having the whole zone like they are on Sixth Street. But if they can leave Sixth Street the way it is, I don't see, I don't see a problem with those signs, other than they don't flash on the backside. That's.
We leave Sixth Street alone and we add a flashing light, you can push a button
We can upgrade those lights, or those signs, right?
Yeah, we can, we can talk of options. I mean, I know things we spit-balled or, you know. We can even look, depending on the cost, if, you know, it's not gonna throw the, the project budget overall over waves, asking, can we upgrade those, you know? They make school zone signs that even have the, this is your speed. That would be a verbal reminder to
I like those.
people of like, hey, you're driving 30 in a 20. So, we can ask about that. I mean, and I think, again, we're not. So I'm, I'm hearing consensus is rapid flashing beacon, Seventh and Chestnut. Okay with the simple school zone sign, for lack of a better term for that. And then finding, or going to flashing school zone signs and getting rid of the RFBs on Stick, or, yeah, Sixth Street. Okay.
So you have clear, concise direction now?
Cause I'll still put my signs out.
Yeah. Well, I say, the nice thing right now that we have is thankfully the school has, has kept a crossing guard and that's a manned crosswalk on the most busy and where we have the youngest students crossing. That's been a manned crossing guard or crosswalk for
Yeah, that's where I put, that's where I put the cross, the crossing, stop crossing signs out at 6:15 in the morning and pick them up later, so they don't get run over. They do get run over. I was gonna bring a piece of one in this evening to show you, just, just the word school. That's all that was left. That was the biggest piece left of this last one that got hit. Those are $371 apiece for those, the signs that go out there in the street.
All right, we're good to move on?
So.
Next item under new business is bank card, credit card processing. Much back to you again, Ethan. Let's back to you again, Ethan.
I'll take it. Staff met, uh, currently we utilize, uh, it's called Elevon for our credit card processing. Uh, we got notice that their processing fees were gonna go up, so staff explored other options, uh, found bank card, uh, which offers us a better rate, um, for uh, those processing fees. Uh, let's see, it's either, and the part of this will depend and some of it we'll need council input on, um, right now we pay anywhere from uh, five percent to six point three percent for processing fees. Um, but the largest processing we do is for general payments to the city and that's at about three point two five percent. Um, the bank card rates are a flat three point five percent. Um, if the customer incurs the processing charge or three percent if we incur the charge and continue to eat it. Um, right now, uh, and historically, ever since the city implemented credit card payments, uh, the city has paid all processing fees. Uh, just looking at the last twelve months, uh, that equated to just over twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars, uh, that basically comes out of our budget to pay those processing fees. The total, uh, which gives us an estimate of, you know, if you assume about four hundred thousand dollars a year in credit card payments, uh, we have a effective rate of about five point six four percent in processing fees. Uh, right now, the largest portion, like I said, is the city general payments, uh, that's for utility bills, court fines, um, anything generically that's owed to the city. Uh, that's just shy of fourteen thousand in the last twelve months that the city's paid out, uh, which, you know, is a little less than one mil, uh, to put that in a property tax form since most of that's general fund. Uh, next would be Wedgwood at approximately seventy-five hundred dollars a year, and then the EMS, uh, which is around thirteen. Uh, one thing we're needing guidance from you all is whether the city is going to continuous policy of eating those transaction fees. Uh, the big thing, I guess I will point out is when the city started implementing online with PSN, the council at that time said those fees should be passed on to the consumer because they're choosing the convenience and the city still takes cash and check, which offer no fees associated with them. So we do have, um, a little bit, I guess, of a disparity in people that if they pay online with a credit card, they're being charged a fee and they're paying that fee. Whereas if they would pay in the office in person, they're not paying that fee. The city at large is paying that. Um, so there's that consideration for you all as well.
Is there a, an amount per transaction per, per, or is it a percentage of whatever the transaction is?
It's a percentage of the transaction.
So, and what is that percentage?
Uh, if we charge them or if we paid?
If we charge them.
If we charge customers, basically three point five percent. So if somebody had a, you know, twenty dollar fee on their card, then when we ran their card, we'd actually run it for twenty dollars plus three point five percent.
Um, my experience with this recently is, in my opinion, I think we should charge for that service. I left a business, I was doing business with, because I found out that they were charging me twenty percent, charging me, no, it was nineteen percent to use my debit card. Last time I paid a bill, it cost me twenty dollars to pay my bill. And so if we have, have that flat, if we know that's three percent or three and a half, whatever you said, I think that's fair. I just did, did a two hundred and fifty dollar, um, utility bill. It was seven dollars and fifty cents. You know, you, they can write a check, they can come and pay cash if they don't wanna incur. Um, but I don't think that citizens should be, um, twenty-two thousand dollars. There, there, there are some neat things that could be done for the community with that.
Two dragon grants, basically.
Yeah. In my opinion, I think we should, you know, like, like this other company was charging me nineteen percent of whatever my transaction was. That was crazy. I, I'm doing business someplace else. But a three percent, you know, I think we charge them.
Well, it feels like it's a pretty standard across the board. I mean, when you, any business is going to have a fee to use a card, most likely, I mean, it doesn't matter if you register for a tournament and to play, you know, somewhere, there's a processing fee and something other kind of fee usually.
I, I think that's fair.
It doesn't, um, it doesn't fluctuate or change. We just keep it at three and a half?
Yeah, until they, as the processor would, kinda like Elevon did. I mean, they have to notify us usually a few months in advance if they would change that on us. Um, I will note that we do have, um, kind of a separate account that's set up specific to our EMS, uh, billing and collection, uh, because of the methods of payment that we receive on that. We would recommend, um, because we are dealing, you know, with insurance companies and various issues that the city continue to eat that EMS though, um, as I reported, is the smallest, like, we're talking less than fourteen hundred dollars or fifteen hundred dollars in a typical year. Um, and I can let Julie, since she's been more on the billing, kinda talk about, it's, it's kinda hard for us sometimes when insurers pay, they're not gonna take on that extra fee. I mean, they're gonna send us that flat amount, so.
Yeah, we get virtual cards and that's becoming more and more of a thing. Um, and you can't run it for any other amount than what they provide. You can't run it over, you can't run it under. If you try, you get an error. So it's, we're not gonna be able to charge the three point five percent on that. But it is a very minor.
And what's, like I said, what's, what's the percentage of those that we're seeing? Monthly, how many are you think you're seeing a month?
Not, I mean, not that many at all.
It's not, and that would be one of the ones where the city actually, we should see our overall lowered because right now we pay five percent on those, and that, that would drop to three percent if we continue to.
See, something like that, I don't have a problem with.
Yeah.
But, you know, just the general public, yeah.
Yeah, very few people even pay personally with their card for their EMS runs. It's almost all coming from insurance.
And then as far as just general startup costs, uh, we would have, uh, just shy of five thousand dollars in startup costs, and that's just registering, coming online with the Clover, uh, point of sale systems, and Julie, I'm sure would be happy to answer. Um, but this system will allow us, uh, right now, both at the pool and Wedgwood, we basically buy like old school cash registers. We have to manually program them. Um, they're utilizing, uh, this would allow them to essentially, I think, use iPad format, um, so it'd be a digital point of sale system, much easier. Credit card terminal would be attached to it. Uh, the big advantage at the pool is we could finally take cards there where right now we're either having to manually keep that information, which isn't necessarily the most secure between the locations, or they're literally calling us from the pool and reading us card numbers to run, so.
Or sending people from the pool to City Hall to get, pay their, and get their pool pass and go back to the pool. Yeah, they get kinda testy. Yeah, the nice thing about the point of sale systems too for Grant and Sam is Grant wants it as simple as possible. He wants, uh, the high school kids that are lifeguarding for us to be able to, you know, little to no error possible. Whereas Sam, he wants to do where he can actually start tracking inventory. He manually counted, what was it, twenty-two thousand, thirty-one thousand rounds of golf last year. This new system will allow that to do it for him.
Very good.
So it'll save staff time on top of everything else, I think.
Okay. Well, with that, there's a lot here. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the credit card processing agreement with bank card and authorize, uh, city manager to, um, execute required documentation.
We have a motion in a second to, um, into, into an agreement with bank card to handle our credit card processing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That carries. Nice to get that up and running.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the startup cost, including registration, Clover POS system for Wedgwood Golf Course and the Halsted Municipal Swimming Pool, and a terminal for City Hall in the amount not to exceed forty-four hundred dollars.
Say.
Have a motion in a second to, uh, add these point of sale terminals to the golf course, the swimming pool and City Hall. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion, um, for action regarding whether the city will continue to absorb the credit card transaction fees. And we've had the discussion, and I think we will pass them on to the citizens.
With the exception of EMS, right?
Yes, with the exception of EMS.
Okay.
So we got a motion in a second to pass on the credit card processing fees on everything but our EMS billing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That carries. Well, that issue required a lot of action from the council. That finishes our new business section. We do have one executive session on the agenda tonight, and I would entertain the motion for that as soon as Charlie grabs it from Brad and reads it.
All check mark parts?
Yeah.
I move the Halsted City Council reassess executive session to discuss ongoing contract negotiations, consultation with attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship exception, Kansas State statutes annotated seventy-five forty-three nineteen V two. As of the addition of the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, the city manager and the city attorney. Chambers to resume. Seven fifty-five PM.
Say.
We have a motion in a second to enter into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We will be moving to executive session. Well done, Charlie.